All right. Good evening. I'd like to call the March 25, 2024 City Council Meeting to Order. Councilman Moore, could you please lead us in the flag salute?
Ready to begin.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. City Clerk, could you please take the roll?
Councilmember Kalmick.
Here.
Councilmember Moore.
Here.
Councilmember Steele.
Mayor Protem Landau.
Here.
And Mayor Sustarsik.
Here.
All present.
Thank you. Given that we have County Supervisor Andrew Doe with us tonight, and acknowledging there are two items on our consent calendar as a result of Supervisor Doe's very generous donation to support the San Gabriel River Trash Mitigation Initiative, I'd like to start tonight's meeting with the presentation's recognitions. I'll call upon Orange County Supervisor Andrew Doe, the First District. Are there any other council members that would like to join me at the podium for a photo, accepting the checks?
Sure.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and City Council Members. Good evening. It's my honor to be here tonight to present a ceremonial check and ask for your support for the items that will be before you later in the meeting, to accept a grant from the Board of Supervisors District One Discretionary Fund as our contribution towards the San Gabriel River Trash Mitigation Initiative. I want to thank so many people who were involved in the working group that we participated here on January 19 of this year that led to my allocation. The working group included Assemblywoman Diane Dixon, Assemblyman Josh Lowenthal, no, Los Angeles County Supervisor Janice Hahn, and the city of Seal Beach, and also Long Beach, and Surf Rider Foundation. But I want to thank in particular Councilmember Kalmick. Over the years, I've been working with him, and he has always brought to my attention the concerns that you all have with the trash ending up on the beach here in Seal Beach. I've been coming here my whole life to Seal Beach, have a very good friend living on 16th Street, so I'm a frequent guest of your city, and I know how much I love the beach, and to think that all the trash that ends up there every year that you have to clean up through the tunes of thousands of tons of trash, it just seems like a very daunting task and a big responsibility for a city that's relatively small, but to take on this outsized role in a very regional manner for the county. And we know that as trash washes up on Seal Beach, and then over time, the wave will carry it further down into other beaches, into my district in Huntington Beach, and then end it up further south in Newport Beach and further on. And so, I see this as a very worthwhile cause, and I'm glad I was invited, and this study was brought to my attention. Now, one of the things that we studied in that working group is how to implement a long-term mitigation strategy, which involves multiple phases to identify a near term and also longer term in the future, funding sources and also mitigation measures. In order to get to those measures, we have to do the study, the final design, and implementation. And so, what I have volunteered to do is to allocate $525,000 to begin the phase of studying the cost of how do we, what type of support service do we need, how do we procure services, and also to study, more importantly, the public agencies that have jurisdictions over the San Gabriel River all the way upstream and their potential contribution to the trash that may end up here in Seal Beach, and then ultimately coming up with a way that we can capture the trash before it ends up out here in the ocean. So, I am so happy that I'm able to be a part of this solution. It will take place probably over the next few years. I only have nine more months in office, so it will be after my time, but to be able to start this program now is one of the, I will see this, I want to be defining accomplishments in the future for my time in office. So, thank you very much for the opportunity to be here and be with you, and again, for the presentation of the check.
Thank you. Thank you very much, we appreciate it. Councilman Kalmick?
I just wanted to reiterate my thanks to Supervisor Doe and to all of the folks now that have joined our coalition. Over the first five years since I've been on the council, I looked at that river and trash, and I tried to research solutions, and there wasn't anything that seemed to work, until recently, when I learned about an environmental group out of the Netherlands called Ocean Cleanup, who has a very modest goal of cleaning up every ocean and every river in the world. And they have developed several technologies that we've found that, some of which could be used in the San Gabriel River. In fact, some of you may know that there's been a pilot program operating in Biona Creek up in Marina Del Rey for over a year that has successfully moved thousands of tons of trash from the river. Now, whether or not that particular technology would work here, that remains to be seen. But I do know that this couldn't happen if we didn't get a coalition that reached across the river. And so, the fact that we have representatives from the L.A. County Public Works, City of Long Beach, various elected officials that are interested, and again, with the generous donation, we're not going backwards, we're only going to move forward. So, again, thank you Supervisor.
Okay. Thank you. We'll move on to National Tsunami Preparedness Week proclamation, March 24 to 29, 2024. City Manager, do we have a presentation? Or do I just read it?
Good evening, Madam Mayor. Thank you for giving us the opportunity to recognize National Tsunami Preparedness Week. I'd like to hand this matter over to City of Seal Beach Emergency Services Coordinator, Sergeant Brian Gray.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm sorry, I didn't bring a big check. I feel a little bit...
Darn, I could use one.
You're looking wide-eyed. Honorable Mayor, distinguished council members, esteemed City Manager, and dedicated city staff, I stand before you today with a deep sense of gratitude and responsibility as the Emergency Services Coordinator for our beloved Seal Beach. It is an honor to serve this community, especially during times when our preparedness and resilience are put to the test. I'd like to express my sincere appreciation to each of you for your unwavering support and commitment to the safety and well-being of our residents. Your dedication is truly commendable and serves as an inspiration to us all. Today, I have the privilege of accepting the tsunami proclamation on behalf of the City of Seal Beach. This proclamation is a testament to our commitment to preparedness and serves as a reminder of the importance of being ready for any disaster that may come our way. In light of this proclamation, I urge all residents of Seal Beach to take proactive steps to better prepare themselves and their families for all types of emergencies. One essential step is to create a go-kit containing emergency food, water, and other supplies that can sustain you for at least 72 hours. Having a well-prepared kit can make a significant difference in your ability to cope with and recover from a disaster. Additionally, I encourage all residents to subscribe to our alert and warning systems, Nixle and Alert OC, more information on our city website. These systems provide timely and critical information during emergencies, helping to keep you informed and safe. Together, we can build a more resilient and prepared community. Let us continue to work hand-in-hand to ensure the safety and well-being of the residents of Seal Beach. Thank you.
Hold on just a sec, now I'll read my part, I'm sorry. "Over the past 200 years, the coast of California has experienced at least two dozen tsunamis, 15 of which have damaged our coastal communities. In cooperation with the State of California Office of Emergency Services, the City of Seal Beach will be taking an active role in promoting public education and awareness about tsunami preparedness. Now therefore, be it proclaimed that I, Mayor Sustarsik, and members of the Seal Beach City Council family declare March 24 to March 29, 2024, National Tsunami Preparedness Week, and publicly acknowledge the importance of preparing for natural disasters in the City of Seal Beach. I witness thereof, I officially affix my signature and seal of the City of Seal Beach this 25th day of March in the year 2024." And we have a...
Thank you, Mayor. Oh, there's...
Should be something, is that it? Ooh, big.
I'll give it to you, you give it back.
Okay, now our next presentation is the City of Seal Beach Dump Day Debrief Presentation, and I'd like to call up Management Analyst Bear Shike.
Thank you, Mayor. We are excited to host our third City of Seal Beach Dump Day on March 9 with our partners from Caltrans, Republic Services, and Goodwill as part of the Clean California Initiative. Next slide, please. I'm happy to report this was our best event yet. We had 140 drop-offs, which is a 56% increase from 2023. We filled six bins, and a huge shout-out goes to Republic Services for bringing two extra bins at the last minute. We had planned for four, as we had not gone beyond four in the past, and without the extra two bins, we would have hit capacity way before the end of the event, and we would have needed to turn residents away, which would not have been fun. We had 9.4 tons of trash that went to the landfill, which is over 18,000 pounds. I double-checked with Republic that this was accurate, as it was very shocking to me, and 30% of drop-offs yielded something for Goodwill, so thank you to our residents for being so generous. Next slide, please. So, here are some photos from the day. Mayor Sustarsik, City Manager Ingram, and Chief Henderson stopped by. Chief even brought donuts, which was greatly appreciated by the Caltrans crew. And as Mayor Sustarsik experienced, this is a very fun event because everyone is really happy. We conducted our exit surveys and kept hearing positive feedback with comments thanking us for a great event and complimenting us, telling us it was easy and efficient. One resident even stated that the Caltrans crew was so helpful and cheerful that they were angels missing their wings. Next slide, please. And now, for the moment you've all been waiting for, as promised, which council member had the most drop-offs? Next slide. So, congrats, Mayor Sustarsik, you knocked it out of the park. And as a fun surprise, I don't have a check.
I could use a check.
But I do have a golden dumpster trophy for you. And I'd like to note that this was constructed using all salvaged materials. So, I'll be happy to present this to you, and thank you, everyone, for a great event. Thank you.
Put that on the accent. I'll put it in my... Okay. It's golden, it's shiny. Okay. Next up is Oral Communications. At this time, members of the public may address the council regarding any items within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city council. Pursuant to the Brown Act, the council cannot discuss or take action on any items not on the agenda unless authorized by law. Matters not on the agenda may, at the council's discretion, be referred to the city manager and placed on a future agenda. All speakers are limited to a period of five minutes. Speakers must address their comments only to the mayor and the entire city council, and not to any individual, member of the staff, or audience. Any documents for review should be presented to the city clerk for distribution. Speaker cards are available at the clerk's desk for those wishing to sign up to address the council, although the submission of a speaker card is not required in order to address the council. Okay, let's see, I have a couple. I'll start with Barna Layton. I'm sorry.
Good evening. Good evening. My name is Barna Zaison. I lived in College Park East for the past 16 years. We bought our house in 2008. Oh, sorry. So, this morning, I checked the FEMA Flood Map Service just to make sure that I have the most accurate, up-to-date information, and I checked that the area of College Park East, which has the frequent flooding, is in the so-called shaded zone X, which is a moderate flood-risk zone. Compared to that Zone A, which is the category for levee breach flooding zones, and Zone V, which is the coastal flooding zones, are high-risk areas. However, it is clear that it doesn't take a storm for College Park East to get flooded. Virtually every time it rains, the risk of at least cars getting flooded is imminent. We had a contractor working at our house on Saturday, this Saturday, and within an hour of the rain, he could not get into his car, all four wheels were in the middle of the river. He was using buckets to fetch water to mix the mortar from the river flowing on the street. No storm, just the regular rain. We had an elderly couple living next door to us for like 15 years. They decided to stay independent until their last minute, and I was watching them over the years, when they lost the ability to follow the news and move their cars to higher ground when there is rain in the forecast. What was happening year to year, their car always got flooded. The gentleman kept the four doors of the car open all year to let it dry out. So, I'm just giving you examples of people who don't necessarily come to these meetings to tell you about the problem they have, but it is definitely a serious problem. So, in my opinion, it's just clearly a question of time before someone at that age is going to get hurt, and you know, it's no longer just a problem of property loss. As it was said during the town hall meeting you guys hosted, thank you for making that happen, by the way, there are other cities in the area with similar problems. The city of Fountain Valley has been struggling with similar flooding issues over the past 10 years, and they ended up solving it. The residents of College Park East and Seal Beach, we feel like for 20 years, it has only been about talking. We have not seen a list of grants the city applied. From what I understand, for this type of problems, which is not a state or federal issue because it's not Zone A or Zone V, it is going to be the responsibility of the City Public Works Department to address this problem. And the money needs to be coming from the municipal budget, supplemented by state and federal funds for these larger projects. So, as I said, the legal situation, from what I understand, based on my legal research, and maybe there are nuances to this, but the city council does have a legal obligation to maintain the infrastructure, and failure to address known issues and neglect proper maintenance and fixes could potentially be held liable for damages caused by inadequate drainage. Negligence. Liability often hinges on whether the city council acted negligently. If they were aware of the drainage problems but failed to take reasonable steps to address them, they might be held accountable. Government immunity does apply, however, this immunity is not absolute. Exceptions exist, especially when negligence or deliberate misconduct is involved. So, what I would like to know, when College Park East was built, and the permits were pulled by the developer to build the neighborhood, most cities have local ordinances for resilience against flooding. I'm pretty convinced that none of this was in place for College Park East and Seal Beach, because I have not seen any of the common ordinances for base flood elevation, wet, drywall, floodproofing.
You have 30 seconds to wrap up.
To wrap it up, I would ask the city management, the council, to do a proper project management practice where the staff who starts the project creates a charter, shares it with the residents, the charter has a clear scope statement, desired outcomes and deliverables, schedule a timeline with clear milestones. And first and foremost, we need report on a regular cadence.
Time has expired.
I would like the city council to stop the sale of the property in Ironwood until a shovel-ready project has been approved, and I would like reassurance if the project does go in a different direction, the funds are used for solving this problem. Thank you.
The next card is for, it looks like S U R B N I? Okay. Thank you. Sorry. Sue, okay, sorry.
Right. So, good evening, everyone. Am I, I'm actually a neighbor of the Zagzons right here, and live in College Park East, and I would like to pretty much reemphasize all what the prior speaker said, Mr. Barna said. Every time, even if it rains, even if it's a small, minor drizzle, the entire street gets flooded. It's on Guava in Seal Beach, in College Park East, and it gets flooded, and we are all stressed out, like I have to make sure that the cars are, you know, cars are parked correctly, and you know, and take care of all the other, you know, of our property, and make sure that my house is not flooded, because, and then the minute the flood, there's a flood and cars drive on that street, which somehow people have to still drive, the last time it flooded in, I think it was Jan or February of this year, it had pretty much reached my front door. So, it is very serious, and I don't think the residents need to live with this kind of stress. So, I've been living there for, we've been living there for 12 years, and nothing has happened regarding this. Every year, it's the same thing, and every year, we have to kind of, kind of check if the pumps are in place, and so I don't think, you know, we pay the same amount of taxes, so I don't think, I don't know why this has not been taken into consideration, how, why our community is still under this situation. And I also think that it has worsened, maybe there are more rains, I don't know what the situation, but it has actually worsened. And so, I would like this mayor and all of you to please kindly consider this, and please give us a solution for this. I know there is a home that has the 104517 Ironwood, so I am hoping that that sale is stopped, or whatever is necessary is done for our issue, ongoing issue, and that's all I have. Thank you so much.
Okay, that's all the cards I have, so if someone would like to come up and speak?
Good evening. Mayor Sustarsik, Mayor Protem Landau, Councilmembers Moore, Kalmick, Steele, City Manager Ingram, and city staff. My name is, can you hear me now? Okay, gotta get a little bit lower here. My name is Maddie Merrill. I'm a financial advisor and certified divorce analyst at Morgan Stanley, and I am a board member for the Seal Beach Chamber of Commerce. We're excited about many of the new members we've had join us over the past month. We had not one, but two bronze sponsors from Sunnyside Cafe and the City Light Streetwear. On the individual side, we had the International Cargo West, Seagirdsm Shelby Event Center, Campbell Printing, Frame Insight Optometry, and the Collaborative Health Insurance Solutions. The chamber has been very busy this past month, as always. Our team at Chamber ran successfully in the Run Seal Beach, where our very own Gary Bean, who is the chair of the car show, won his age division. Three of our board members attended the Americana Awards, which honored Kathy and Greg Felners as the Citizens of the Year for Seal Beach. Our Let's Do Lunch at Finnbars was a great opportunity for our members to network while having a delicious lunch. This occurs on the third Wednesday of every month. And we continue to add to our Boeing and Military Discount Page, where the QR code is sent to visiting Boeing and naval members as they come in to the ships. We encourage business owners to contact us if they have any discounts so that they can be included in this QR package. Not only have we been busy in the past month, but we're gearing up for our busy season of spring and summer events. We have two upcoming ribbon cuttings. The first on April 1 at 10:00 a.m. at the new Sunnyside Cafe. After that, on May 11, from 1:00 to 2:30 p.m., we'll be over at Prep Cooking Classes. That's a Saturday, May 11. Our monthly networking breakfasts will be held on the water at the Beach House. This happened, this next one will be on Thursday, April 11, at 7:45 a.m., where Debbie from Republic Services will be coming to talk a little trash. For those whose schedules don't allow you to join us at 7:45 in the morning, we do have those networking breakfasts on the third Wednesday, again at noon at Finnbars. We're also very excited to announce the upcoming of our Seal Beach Classic Car Show in partnership with the City of Seal Beach. This is one of our biggest events of the year. It's coming up on Saturday, April 27, starting at 9:00 a.m. This year, there will be over 650 cars and bands in four different locations all along the pier and up and down Main Street. And then, coming up right after that, just a few weeks later, on Saturday, May 18, we will be having our Be More Healthy Expo, where we're offering free health screenings. As we finish up the spring and kick off to the summer, Nashville on the Coast will start their summer concerts, June 19 through the 23rd of August, and that will occur from 6:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. Thank you so much for your time tonight, and we hope to see you at one of these events in the future. For more information, please contact the Seal Beach Chamber office, and Happy Easter to all those who celebrate.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, next.
Good evening. My name is Bill D. Witt. I live at 3851 Heather Street. In regards to item F, everybody else has said it better than me in many ways, but I'll make a point that we as a society can choose to survive, or we can choose to fail. And what the people who will look to buy my house at some point in the future, whether five years from now or 50 years from now, they will see that this, that this city has chosen to fail and not survive in terms of its residents and the terms of the property. And I ask that consideration be given to, do you want your city to, do you want your community, do you want your city, do you want the future property owners to see this as a city that survives and thrives, or are we a city that chooses to fail? Thank you.
Someone else would like to speak?
Unlike the last speaker, I'm short, so I can do this with the microphone. Okay, Patty Campbell. I'm gonna read from some staff reports. This is an Agenda staff report dated June 27, 2011. There are 10 properties that are on the north side of Ironwood Avenue between Guava and Elder. Should one of those homes be acquired by the city, an upsized storm drain can be constructed for a significantly lower cost than the 8.2 million identified within the master plan of drainage. It is likely that this project can be constructed at a cost of under 1 million. This property can also become a small pocket park for the community after the construction is complete, as the entire storm drain will reside underground. Okay, then from August 2011, the storm drains, Ironwood Storm Drain Project, the storm drains are undersized at the intersections of Ironwood Avenue with Guava and Iron Avenue with Elder. The 2008 master plan of drainage identified two possible solutions to improve this situation. One option was to construct an 18.7 million drain system, which would include a pump station at Blue Bell Park. The other option was to increase the size of the undersized storm drains for a total cost of approximately 1 million. In 2009, it was decided upsizing these drains would be extremely difficult due to their proximity to the house foundations and adjacent to the existing easements. Well, then in 2014, the city purchased the house at 4197 Ironwood. The house is on the north side of Ironwood at Elder, midway between Guava and Candlebury, and has a drainage culvert right in front of it. A perfect house for what the city needs to do the upsetting at the lowest cost. At the March 25, 2019 meeting, Shelley asked Zeki, who was our storm drainage consultant for years, what the current flood protection was, and he responded two plus years. Now, alternative one, at now 11 million in 2019 dollars, was proposed to increase the protection to a five-year level with a large-capacity box culverts that gravity drained into the basin through the rental house property. With the sale of that house, the lower-cost non-pump option will no longer be available. The only thing left is the more expensive ones, which doesn't make sense. Now, keeping the house versus selling it. If the house is sold and the money placed into a special account, I'll just, numbers here, 1 million compounded quarterly at 5% will yield 1,283,684 in five years, and in 10 years, it'll yield 1,647. If the house is kept and rented out, at the end of five years, the rental income, with 5% yearly increase, is which is a state guideline, the rental income will be 331,538. If kept for 10 years, the rental income will be 754,674. Plus, you will have the appreciation of the house, which over even five or 10 years will be substantial. Right now, the house is valued at 1.2 million. In 10 years, be well over 2 million. So you have the appreciation plus the rent. Compounding with interest doesn't come near that. Now, Shelley Sastarsik, Carol Ontario, who's the top Realtor-ing CPE, and myself have all gone through the house, and I might add that we all have rental properties, so we know very well what's involved in bringing a property up to rental condition. We believe the costs to bring this up to rental condition are under $50,000, not the 200,000 that some have estimated. All that house needs is new flooring, paint, and the ceilings done. The bathrooms and kitchen have all been upgraded. You can get a lot of paint and flooring for 50,000 even at paying scale. And I might add that, one of the things that, what I've learned, and having rental properties, you get what you pay for. And I have good people that, that will work for me, and you pay them well.
You have 30 seconds to wrap up.
And so that's what you have to do. So this 50,000 is not using poor workers, it's using good people. So if the house is sold, we may never get any drainage improvements, and that is just not right, especially since people voted for the improvements, and it didn't get written up that way. Thank you.
I have, oh. All right, back to Tal. Good evening, mayor and council members. Patty Senical with College Park East. I did attend the town hall last week. We had about 100 people there, residents, that are deeply concerned, and I'd like to thank the council members who were able to attend. And you no doubt heard the passion from the residents. Many of are here tonight. You heard the passion, the concern in their voices. This is a public safety issue. This is a property loss issue. And so I think we're hearing, you know, this is a 20-year situation, and it's time to resolve it. And you have a lot of folks in College Park East that have engineering degrees, civil engineers, all types of folks that have environmental backgrounds and stuff, that would, you know, we could come together and work alongside of the city. So again, my recommendation, as you've heard from others, is don't sell the house. This is a, until we have a, until we have a shovel-ready option, and a shovel-ready option means engineered, it means permitted, it means agencies approval, because there's gonna be several agencies involved, and the funding is in place, that's shovel-ready. And until that is ready and we have an option, that's when the house should be considered for sale. Rent the property, it's an asset, and let it generate income. And I would also say that we really do need a viable option now, and this is, because again, it takes quite a while to get through engineering and permitting, and that alone could take a year or so, right there, maybe two. And so it's really time to get a viable option on the table, whether it's Astor Park or the house, or something new we haven't thought of, and get that on the table so the residents, many of them sitting right here, who live on that impacted street and the streets around it, can come together and really understand your options, and then we can rally with you, once we have something that we can support and we think is the permanent, long-term solution that is long overdue. And so I would just recommend, use the community, we're here to help support the council in moving this in the right direction. So thank you for your time, and then thank you to the residents who showed up tonight as well. Thank you.
Hello, Mayor Sastarsik and City Council. My name is Donna Byery, B-I-E-R-Y. I live at 4349 Hazel Nut Avenue, which is highly impacted by the storm. The street floods regularly. I would like to state that I am in the affirmative with those that have spoken before me that we should not sell the property on Ironwood Avenue. And for those who are not, have not chosen to stand to come up here, just simply raise your hand if you're from College Park East, and let them know who we are. Thank you.
Hi, good evening. Way Finali from College Park East. Thank you, mayor and council, for, and also director of Public Works to host the town hall last week, but I'm here to oppose the sale. Well, as the director of Public Works acknowledged at last week's town hall, the pumps placed at Ironwood and Elder is not an efficient solution. And however, with the proposed sale of 4197 Ironwood, there's currently no plan in place for resolving the problem, and further study is required. It is disheartening that despite decades of awareness, the city is still in the studying stage of, regarding the flooding issue. The decision to sell city-owned property initially intended to fund the project leave us feeling abandoned. Retaining the city-owned property is not the sole solution, but is part of the solution, we hope. Also additionally, the impact of the new development on Lamson and CPE's flooding drainage giving that old ranch serves as CPE's storm water basin remains unknown. Flooding poses severe safety hazard, damaging homes, properties, and potentially endangering lives. So the city, the city should have a designated committee regularly updating CPE residents on flooding mitigation effort. Until a comprehensive plan is established, the city should provide flooding insurance to residents residing on impacted streets. Thank you.
Hope-horning, although I don't live in College Park East, I would like the opportunity to raise my hand also, in support of what they've already said. And I would remind the council that your city council norms say we need to maintain a citywide perspective while being mindful of our districts, and you need to utilize long-range plans to provide big-picture context that is realistic and achievable. So you need to give open-minded consideration to all viewpoints and focus on the issues and avoid personalizing the debate. I support what the folks before me have said.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak tonight? Okay, seeing none, I'll close oral communications. Okay, we'll move on to approval of the agenda and waiver of full reading of resolutions and ordinances. By motion of the city council, this is the time to notify the public of any changes to the agenda and/or reorganize the order of the agenda. Is there anyone who would like to pull a consent calendar item?
Yes. Mayor, I would like to pull item H and item J.
Okay, and I'm going to pull item D and item F. Anybody else pulling anything? Okay, can I get a motion to approve the agenda, please? Second?
I'll second.
Okay, please vote on your iPads. Okay, that carries 5-0. We're gonna move on to the city attorney report. City Attorney Gurelli, do you have anything to report?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The city council met earlier this afternoon in closed session to meet on the three items posted on the posted agenda. All five council members were present, and no reportable action was taken. Thank you.
Okay. City Manager Ingram, do you have anything to report tonight?
I have no report tonight, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to council comments. Councilman Calmick, I'm gonna start with you.
Thank you, mayor. This past weekend, I attended the Orange County Fire Open House, and I would strongly urge, whether you have children or grandchildren, or just like to sit on a big fire engine, to, next year, to plan to attend. They put on a tremendous event. They had the firefighting helicopter there, they had a brand-new airport crash truck, which can only be seen before it goes into service, because once it's there, it can't leave. There was all kinds of events for the kids, you know, using a fire hose and obstacle courses, and it, it's very, very educational as well. So I would encourage, next year, and we'll try and maybe publicize it a bit more in town so you could make plans to go. I attended a meeting of the Rivers and Mountains Conservancy. We had a city hall ceremony here in our courtyard, where we converted a fountain that had long since passed its useful life, and it was planted by staff with succulent plants and pollinating plants. And I would encourage people, the next time you are this way or visit city hall, to take a look out back, it's really a very lovely place now. I attended a commander's coffee for the Naval Weapons Station. The commander basically hosted everybody and gave several updates as to what's new on the base, the plans for the completion of the new WARP project. She's very proactive and is even doing things like, you know, getting rid of abandoned railroad cars that have been sitting there for years, since they no longer have a railroad running through the base. So that was, that was very interesting. Attended an Orange County Fire Legislative Committee, where we review various pieces of legislation that come up to see whether, you know, what kind of a position Orange County would take in supporting or not on various pieces of legislation that would affect all of us. And tomorrow, we're having our second meeting of the San Gabriel River Working Group here, and you heard some of the preliminary, and it's, it's amazing that we have the group that we have, representing, you know, both sides of the county line, and the funding that we've received from Supervisor Doe is, is definitely gonna get us moving forward, and I will try and keep everybody updated as to our progress. Thank you.
Okay. Councilman Moore, did you have?
Yeah, just a few things. I've attended a Leisure World city meeting last week with city staff, the leadership of Leisure World, and council member Steel. That was a very good meeting. We talked about senior transportation and water sewer, and the upcoming centenarian event, which I'm looking forward to, celebrating seniors that are over 100 years old, so. And then in College Park East, or we went, went to the College Park East Town Hall, it was good to hear so many passionate people. I thought there were some good ideas, and, and we'll talk about that in a little bit, and that's all I have. Thanks.
Okay. Councilman Steel, did you have?
Thank you, mayor. Since the last meeting, I met with the, my, my candidate, my board member from the cable TV group, their board. His name is Peter Frank. He was, he was tendering his resignation to me. He has somewhere in the range of 40 years as a lawyer working in the cable TV industry. I thank him for his service, and, and he, he has a replacement, but we haven't been able to get his name in the pool quite yet. So anyway, I appreciated his service to the city and working on that board. I also was at the working group with GRF for that particular meeting. They've got a major concern about transportation inside Leisure World. They've had a bus system inside there for decades, literally, and it's come to the point now with cost increases and the cost of insurance and other, that, that they're looking for alternatives of how to shuttle people around inside. of how to shuttle people around inside Leisure World. We own a fleet of buses out there, and so they're up against the wall financially as to how to continue that service for the people that live, the 9,000 people that live inside Leisure World. On the mosquito front, I am on the Orange County Mosquito Vector Board. Sounds strange and sounds weird, but I actually have a mosquito tie on this evening. This is all mosquitoes, when you see that. So I'm quite proud of the work that we do at Orange County Mosquito Vector. They've already had nine cases of Dengue fever in California last year, or excuse me, in Orange County. They were not locally contracted, they were contracted overseas and brought back, but nonetheless, we have had in Orange County locally contracted Dengue fever. What do we do about this? Be mindful of standing water, be mindful of the places that mosquitoes can breed. And if you have standing water that you can't manage yourself, give us a call. We'll send out a technician, they'll look for mosquitoes. On the Mosquito Vector front, also, I'm serving on their Finance Board and also on their Board for Public Relations. They are going to be kicking off their annual Public Relations Campaign in April of this year, where they want people to be aware of mosquitoes and what to do about mosquitoes, and there are various programs they're going to be launching on that. If you are on Facebook, they have a really nice Facebook presence. So look up OC Mosquito Vector on your Facebook and follow them, and hopefully be not nearly as entertained as our Seal Beach Police Department Facebook presence, which is, by the way, quite legendary. I was in Dallas. I was in Dallas, Texas, a few weeks ago, and I mentioned to somebody that I was from Seal Beach, and the guy who was from, I don't know, Tuscaloosa or something, said, "Oh, your police department is funny, I like." So anyway, they're followed out there. Anyway, let's see. I was also at Mayor Sastarsik's Town Hall meeting last week. I am deeply sympathetic, and we'll talk about this more a little bit later on. I can't imagine what it's like to have flooding in your streets, up to your doors. We'll talk a little bit later on about what's going on. And I would like to remind everybody about this week, which is Holy Week. This is an important week in Christianity. It is the week. I've never seen the movie Passion of the Christ, so I just never liked to watch it, never thought about it. I am a Christian, and I do believe in these things, and I watched the movie for the first time yesterday, and the impact is something. So anyway, but the big event about this week is not Friday, it's not the crucifixion, it's about Sunday and the resurrection, so be mindful of that. In Matthew, Mark, Luke, and John, toward the end of each of those books, you can read the story of Jesus coming to Jerusalem, his crucifixion, and the resurrection, so have a look in that direction. And that's it.
Mayor Brotem Landau, do you have a report?
So I just want to talk about Run Seal Beach was a huge success, as always, but I want to talk about the other side of it. I want to address some residents' concerns. I received a number of emails and text messages from folks in Old Town regarding the route and street closers for the 5K run, because they literally found themselves trapped in town during the duration of the run. I personally know their pain, because about 10 years ago, when I lived in Old Town with my son Cody, we got some farmer pony baseball teammates there, we couldn't get out of town, and he missed a really important game that he was starting. So we missed that, and so I get that, and I had residents reach out, and so I wanted to just let our residents know that I shared these concerns with our City Manager Ingram. She immediately forwarded them to Chief Henderson, and he has given me a very thorough overview of the steps that the PD and the city and the Run Seal Beach Committee took to ensure the success of this year's Run Seal Beach. He also, I appreciate his timely response to my concerns with his email, and he sent that to all of my fellow council members. I would like to read an excerpt from Chief Henderson's email, if that's okay. "I want to ensure you, Mayor Brotem Landau, and the residents of Seal Beach, that the safety, convenience, and well-being of our community are our highest priorities. We are dedicated to continuous improvement and open dialogue with our community members. I am more than willing to discuss any further questions or concerns you might have, and I remain committed to making Seal Beach a vibrant, inclusive, and safe community for all." So I just want to say, our police department, our city, does listen, and like our PD always says, no question is too small. So thank you.
At the last meeting, I forgot one thing I had visited, was Magath School invited me to attend their Pageant of the Arts, and this was in earlier March. March 8th is when I went, and it was very fun with, you know, they have these paintings of the great painters, and then the children do little dances that go along with it. So I want to thank Principal Wendy Wood for inviting me, and I enjoyed it very much, and maybe next year, if you haven't gone, it's a fun evening, so thank you. Let's see, let me put my glasses on for this one. I attended Rossmore Community Services District. They've been doing a study for months, looking at parking on Montecito, traffic on Montecito and Shakespeare. We're working with the Orange County Public Works Department, and they were suggesting putting, changing the four lanes into three lanes, and putting in bike lanes and roundabouts. Anyway, they had a survey that began in December and went through January. They asked the residents to reply, what did they think of the plans? And all of the proposals received a majority no vote. So it looks like they will maintain their status quo, but there were some suggestions for, you know, handling traffic. I think it's mostly school drop-off and pickup times that create some of the problems, but so that process seems to be over for now. I attended a Seal Beach Chamber networking breakfast. Always, always, thank you, Jeannie, always very informative events. This one was at the Beach House, so I got a chance to visit there. I also attended Run Seal Beach, got a chance to help push the starting siren with Senator Janet Nguyen. Lots and lots of runners. I saw City Manager and Chief Henderson in the crowd there. So thanks to everybody that ran. I came to the demonstration project at the courtyard for the planting of the fountain and also a little pollinator garden that they transformed the back of the yard, which was just turf, and they made it into some plants and a little path, and some signs for kids for about pollinators. So it's really cute if you come down when it's light, it's fun to visit. Maybe if you have little ones, bring them to see. I also attended the State of the Base Coffee with Seal Beach Naval Weapons Station Captain O'Brien. Got a lot of updates on what's happening over there. I attended an ACCOC Mayor Oral Roundtable on Thursday, and that night, the College Park East Town Hall. Like to thank all the people who turned out at the Town Hall, told everyone what's happening in their neighborhood, what's happening on their street, and I hope that, I want to thank the council members who attended, and I hope all of you help them, give them appreciation for what it's like in College Park East when it's raining, whether it's a little bit or a lot. I wanted to thank City Manager Ingram, Finance Director Barbara Ornato, the Chief Captain. Thank you to Sergeant Brian Gray for his presentation, and thank you to Iris Lee for her presentation, and for Alexa Smidell for being there, too. So thank you. This morning, I attended a Western Association of Schools and Colleges visit, a WASC visit at Los Alamos High School. This is their final, this is the third visit, which is their final session, and they'll get a visit next year in February, in February 2025. And I appreciate them for inviting me. And I think that's it. Okay, thank you. Okay, we'll move on to the consent calendar. Consent calendar items are considered to be routine and are enacted by a single motion with the exception of items removed by council members. I'd like to call for a motion in a second to approve the consent calendar with the exception of items D, F, H, and J.
So move.
Okay, is there a second? All right. Would you please vote on your iPads? Okay, that carries 5-0. Thank you, that passes. Item D, which is council appointment to the Recreation and Parks Commission, District 4. It's my request to appoint William Holliday DeWitt II to the Recreation and Parks Commission as a representative for District 4. I pulled this just to introduce Bills here, and I'd like to express my gratitude to him. It's not a long appointment, but I'm excited because Bill is a parent to two boys, school-age boys, and I know, I know, and a little one, and so I'd like to tell him, you know, we could bring the little one, too, anytime to the meeting, and I'm sure they'd love it at the Parks and Rec Commission. But Bill's also a Boy Scout leader, he's volunteered at College Park East neighborhood events, and he really got my attention when he posted something on Nextdoor one time about people coming and helping him pull weeds in the sand at the tot lot, and I was like, you know, we can tell the city and what. And he said, "No, it's our community, I think we should all help make it better." So when I had a vacancy come up, and I'd like to thank Ann for her service on there, but I thought, gee, I wonder if I can get Bill to come and do it, because I think he'd be great. So thank you very much for volunteering, and thank you very much, so. Okay, next is item F, approval of the sale contract for 4197 Ironwood Avenue.
We need a motion. Mayor, we need a motion and a vote.
We have to make a, okay, sorry, we have to vote you in, it's not my, I'm not good enough. Okay, I'll move it.
I'll second.
Okay, thank you. Please vote on your iPads if it's, there we go. Okay, now it's official. There we go, thank you. Okay, now we'll move on to item F, approval of a sale contract at 4197 Ironwood Avenue. City Manager, is there a staff report?
Yes, Mayor. I'll ask our Community Development Director, Alexa Smidell, to present this item to you tonight. Alexa?
Thank you, City Manager Ingram, and good evening, Mayor and City Council. You have seen this item before, so I think it's very clear what we're doing here this evening. As you know, this item authorizes the sale of the Ironwood property. This item was before the council, on the February 26th meeting, where the council decided to postpone the decision until after the Town Hall meeting could be held by Mayor Sastarsik for the College Park East residents. That meeting was held last Thursday, March 21st. At the previous meeting, and even as recently as last week, when the staff report was finalized, the circumstances regarding the sale had remained unchanged, but we have had some movement because when you're selling a property, it's fluid. Offers can come and go, or fall through, or change for any number of reasons. And we've even had changes as recently as within the last couple of hours. We do have our property manager, Mohammed Baghdadi, is here, and he can provide an update on the purchase price offers that are currently on the table. I believe that we do, again, have a cash offer as well as some financing offers. The financing offers that I am aware of start at the 1.2 asking price, and I believe that Mohammed can provide an update on the other offers that have been received within the last couple of hours, if you would like to hear from him at this time. Otherwise, I am available for questions.
Okay, thank you. Yes, please, thank you.
Good evening. As from the meeting on February 26th, we received several offers. Several offers were cash, as mentioned earlier. Given the circumstances and the delay in the sale, given we bought more time, it has been very fluid. But currently, right now, if the City Council decides to move forward, we're still in a good position where we still have all cash offer above asking price. We just followed up a couple of hours ago, and another offer, which is very close to asking, around $5,000 less than asking, which is all cash as well, and several backup offers with financing contingencies, which we can fall back on if need be, depending on what the City Council decides.
Okay, thank you. Does anybody have any questions for property manager? No? Okay, thank you very much.
Mayor, what's in the resolution before you tonight in terms of sale price? Should you decide to approve the sale of the property? Is you would direct staff to move forward vetting the offers with the intent of obtaining the highest offer, if at all possible, but under no circumstances to be sold after the asking value of the 1.2 million?
All right. Do we have any discussion, suggestions?
After hearing a lot of the residents, I don't know if I want to say complaints, but I'm really feeling like we should look at a shovel-ready project before we do anything
So you would be in favor of keeping it and renting it?
Yes.
Okay, anybody like to have an alternate?
Mayor, if you could speak into the mic?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Okay, I'll be the one that goes out on a limb here. I genuinely feel bad about the flooding at that one end of College Park East. Turns out, my wife's uncle lived in College Park East for decades. Dedrickson, if you ever knew the Dedricksons back on the family. I don't think it floods back there, though, on the street that they were on. I was around last year when we had similar flooding, and people came and showed up and talked about the flooding, and I got freaky when one parent was talking about how their kids were playing in the street, in the flooded street, next to the drain in front of Ironwood, and that kind of freaked me out. And so I went out to get a personal tour from Shelley, from Mayor Sastarsik, and from Gary Miller. And they laid out the plan, they showed me the map of the neighborhood, they showed me where the flooding happens, they gave me kind of a history lesson on what's been happening out there. And there is, there's obviously a flooding problem at that one end of the thing, and the problem is not as much per se, it's effluence, it's handling the floodwaters, it's handling and getting them out of that neighborhood. What I've been told, what I believe to be true, is that the Ironwood House, while it was the original idea that we were going to do something there, apparently back in the days of yore, that as a practical solution to the flooding problem, it's not the solution. It doesn't solve any problems. And if we were to build a pump house on that particular lot, it would cost us about, I've been told, anyway, somewhere in the range of $10 million. Some people have said, "Well, let's do an incremental approach." As a non-residence to CPE, the last thing I would want to do is spend millions of the city's money and not have a solution, not have a solution that actually solved the problem. I mean, we could plop a million here, and we could take the money from Ironwood and plop it into solving the problem, and it solving the problem, and it would not solve the problem. And we could just keep chasing money after it. So when you look at the total solution, how much the total solution would cost, it's not Ironwood, and it is considerably more than just $10 million, I believe. Could you confirm that for me, please, Iris?
Yes, Councilmember Steele, depending on the option that we are after, it does start at the lower end of $10 million and going up to $50 million if we do want to go with a 25-year storm protection.
And my understanding also is that if we spent $10 million, whether we're on Ironwood or over in the other property that was on the map that you showed us the other day, that we already own that property, that only covers us for a five-year storm, we would still see flooding in College Park East?
The lower end of the solution to include like a box culvert that we talked about is just going to cover us for up to a five-year storm protection.
A five-year storm. So we would still, even after $10 million, see flooding in College Park East. Now, I come from Leisure World. I have 9,000 neighbors over in Leisure World. And I know that when I sit up here, it's a citywide perspective. So your problems are my problems, College Park East, and I am sympathetic to your problems. But the city doesn't have $10 million. I don't know how. We need to figure out that problem first before we consider where we put it, what we do with it, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. We will not have a shovel-ready project until we actually have the financing in hand, or at least a reasonable length, money coming from somewhere. Our city does not kick off cash. We are not cash-rich. We are essentially a $40 million corporation, and we spend the money on the services that we provide. And there's just not a lot left over. I don't think there's any left over last year, and I don't think there's any left over, at least in the coming budget. So while I am tremendously sympathetic, and I absolutely agree that for the last 50 years, probably when I was in high school, there was a flooding problem in College Park East. It needs to get into reach, and the thing that gets it into reach is not the city of Seal Beach or the other citizens in Seal Beach. It is finding the money, finding the funding somewhere else, from the state, from the county, from the federal government, from our congressmen, from a bond deal that is somehow financed with our money here. That would be one option. But the one thing I'm not going to do is spend $10 million of Seal Beach's money in one way, shape, or form, and not solve the problem. I have a problem with that. So I hope people understand this. Ironwood is not the answer to your problem. It's symbolic. And I honestly don't like the idea of renovating it. I don't think we can renovate it. All due respect, Ms. Campbell, or Mrs. Campbell, Patty. I don't think we can renovate it for $50,000. I think it's more in line with $150,000. But if we were to renovate it and rent it out, it would take three years to get our investment back. And that's just, to me, not a great return on investment. I personally prefer that we sell the property, take one of these offers, and we can set the money aside if you'd like, and use the money for flooding, flood control, something like that. But that's a separate question as far as my brain is concerned. Ironwood is not the solution to the problem. I don't think it would ever be the solution to the problem. And so that's why I favor the sale of the property.
Okay. Anybody else would like to speak? Joe?
I saw a question on the staff report that was read by the public, the 1 million versus the 10 million. I was confused how that changed. Is that 1 million a different type of project?
If my memory serves me correctly, there was a short segment that, which is, I believe, from the Ironwood property to run across the street. So it's a very short segment, and that's just only to convey water from where it currently stands right now and run across the street. It does not include the network of storm drain improvements that is needed for that five-year, the minimal five-year protection that we're talking about.
Okay, so that's different than the $10 million--
Correct.
Kind of the five-year storm proposal.
Correct.
And the five-year storm proposal, does that only relate if to where Ironwood is, or could it be elsewhere?
It also includes shallow storm drain lines around the vicinity on the streets as well. So it's not just localized at 4197 Ironwood.
So we could still do the $10 million project without Ironwood?
We can do additional pipeline projects that run through a different direction to go across the golf course, yes.
Yeah, I attended the town hall. I thought there were a lot of good ideas of alternatives. And I think one of the speakers spoke about starting maybe an ad hoc committee for flooding. I think that's a good idea to meet once a quarter, maybe not just for College Park East, but for the city to look at ideas. And what I'm thinking is, part of our emergency plan should be to, you know, address, like, if there's a storm coming, we do X, Y, and Z in College Park East and in other areas that are susceptible to flood. I know we already do that a little bit, but it'd be nice to have a formal plan and notify the residents that this is what you should do when the storm's coming. We have sandbags at this location, and, you know, something like that. So I'm a little torn. I think that we-- it's if we vote on the current proposal for the city, I'm for selling the property just because I think there's a viable alternative. I think we should, though, also include starting some kind of ad hoc committee as a separate discussion, so.
I would tend to agree with Councilman Moore and Councilman Steele. With regard to upgrading the house to rent it, I think the one factor that plays into the disparity between folks who think we can do it for $50,000 and our staff's estimate is the issue of prevailing wage. And because of that, we have no choice. And that can drive the cost on other projects that we've done in the city as much as 30%. I'm trying to wrap my mind around what are the more global solutions. The problem with grants is that most of the grants require matching funds. So if we were to pull off a miracle and get a grant for $50 million, which would do a lot, we'd have to come up with 25. So my thought is, and it's a long road, but I'm starting to see things that I've noticed in my own efforts with regard to sand replenishment on the beach in Surfside, we changed the dialogue from providing sand to the rich people behind the gates in Surfside to bringing sand back to 17 miles of prime California coastline. And we involved the cities of Huntington Beach and Newport Beach. And that got us the appropriation, and it got us to move the schedule for the Army Corps of Engineers up about 18 months to get them to do it. I point to the San Gabriel River. You know, there was no solution. There was no money. And, you know, it was up to Seal Beach to remove 220 tons of trash after a large ocean event. Perhaps we start making flooding not an Old Town issue, not a College Park East issue, but an issue of flooding in various areas that, with the increase in storms that we seem to be seeing, whether it's cyclical, or it's climate change, whatever you choose to characterize it as, make it a broader issue. Start getting our elected officials involved in some way, and attack it from that standpoint. You know, our resources within the city are so limited that, you know, being sympathetic, it doesn't get the project done. We need a lot of money to make a dent in the problem. You know, we all-- you chose to live in College Park East, many of which you didn't know that there was a flooding potential because, you know, it's just a regular flat area, and we assume that it's going to drain away. You know, I live in Old Town. I know that if they announce that there's a storm coming, and there's some high tides coming, I'm getting out the sandbags. And back in 1983, that didn't work because the houses on the boardwalk had seven feet of sand in their front living rooms. So nature is so capricious that, you know, we can't always plan for a solution and think that it's going to solve the problem. And I think I would be very hesitant to consider coming up with, in some fashion, bonding or whatever else, for $10 million, when it's going to be symbolic, just as I kind of view the Ironwood House as being symbolic. And, you know, I think that if this council, and the next council, and the next council after that, you know, pledge to, in working with the residents of College Park East, to looking at a more global solution, you know, maybe we can do something. You know, I can only point to the two issues that, until I got involved, over my head, you know, I didn't see how we were going to get anything done. And it may be possible that we can do something.
Lisa, did you want to make a comment?
Is there some sort of special district that we could implement that would help us get a bond to at least do the five-year plan?
Yes, there are community facilities districts, financing districts. Those types of things are options to be formed. They're not inexpensive to form, and they are-- they can only be put together by votes of the property owner. So everyone would need to decide that they wanted to be a part of that district in order to make it work.
Do we have any numbers? Have we researched that at all? I mean, does that come up? Like, what would that entail?
I don't think we have an answer to that tonight. I think that would be something that we could look into.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. I had a question for our finance director. Earlier, I was tracing back, trying to figure out where all the rent has gone, because we were told at the time the house was purchased, that the rent would go towards improvements, or that's what I believe. But I also heard it confirmed with Vicky Beatley when I was re-watching the 2019 meeting today, and that the rent was being put away for us. So I wanted to find out what the balance in that account is, and is it still designated for College Park East, or the area of the house, or whatever it is, yes.
Thank you, Mayor, for the question. This is something that I was looking into already. I'm working with Mr. Baghdadi to look at what the current balance is. When the property was acquired in 2014, that money was set in an account that went to the general fund. With that, in 2020, when Westridge took it over, they were accumulating that funds. I'm working with them right now to determine what that balance is. And that fund currently has about $200,000, but that's the leased property account. So we're doing an analysis of what the revenue was, and then also what the expenditures are and have been for that property.
So we did, we've done work on the property over the years, just like little fixes or something?
Correct. And then our rental property fees, and then the normal maintenance and operations of the property for, you know, lawn care and beyond, what taken away from that rent amount was.
Okay. And so when do we expect that we'll have--
I'm working with his team right now. This week?
Okay. This week, okay.
Thank you for--
My issue is, I understand from all these meetings that we've gone through, that it's a difficult thing to do, and it's going to take a long time. What, other than a former council member saying that she would, you know, if she won the lottery, she would fund this for us, apparently we'll have to save up. That money was going to be there. The house was purchased as part of a solution. If it's not going to be the place, it's still-- it was purchased for a College Park East solution. So I would like to keep the house and keep, have rent and maintain that money. I don't believe that it would be less than what it would be to invest the money. So I would be in favor of keeping it in College Park East to keep, you know, keep the money there and try to build it as best we can, whether it's through grants or some other kind of project. So I don't know what plan-- I mean, I don't see how it helps us in College Park East to sell it, send it to some other district, and then wait around with even less money. So that's just my feeling. You know, I don't have a-- I appreciated everyone who came to the town hall meeting. I appreciated some of the out-of-the-box solutions. You know, I've asked, maybe flood insurance is an answer. I don't know. And I also would like, if this property is sold, to make sure that it's disclosed that we've had issues there. Because the house, from what I understand in the email that Iris got, that the house next door flooded during this last storm inside the house. So it's a real concern. And I, you know, I don't have an answer of how we can get that money, but I don't want to just close everything out and leave us on our own. I don't know what else to do, so.
Marissa Starsick, may I?
You may.
Thank you. We're talking about, I think, several issues all at the same time. Disposition of the funds if the house is sold, keeping the house, renting the house, finding out old revenues, future solutions to the problem. I mean, the key thing that I think everybody in this room would like to see is some sort of an idea of how we can solve the big problem. I've said I don't think Ironwood is the solution to the big problem. That's what I've studied. That's what I've seen. That's what I believe to be true, having seen the maps myself. But I would like to suggest, if I could, I'm not sure it's by way of motion or something like that, but at least the idea that maybe tonight we could put together an ad hoc committee of College Park East people to study how we can come up with the financing for the flood control issue. In other words, we're not going to be able to fix the problem as Seal Beach alone, on the wallet that we have and the money in our bank account, we're going to have to figure out how we're going to find to start $10 million, and then more later on. And I think if we have people who are involved in the community, might, coming up with ideas and solutions through the ad hoc process, and coming up with some recommendations that we could actually do something about. Right now, we don't have any recommendations that we could actually do something about. And so that's, it's an idea, and I would make a motion to that effect if it was the wishes of the council, but it's only an idea, and it's only out of the blue, and it certainly could be discussed.
So the agenda item tonight simply refers to--
It's a separate issue. We still could vote on that.
The sale of the--
Right.
--property. So I don't think you could form the ad hoc committee tonight, but if the council wants to, they could agendize it for the next meeting.
What I'm saying is, the sale of Ironwood is still on the table. We're still going to have to take a vote on that. And the ad hoc process or the ad hoc committee is something that the city could participate with the College Park East people on what we could possibly do about this situation. Ideas, bring the-- we're talking about some talented people in the community who might be able to come in and offer some ideas and things like that. It's only an ad hoc. It doesn't solve anything unless we actually get money behind the project. And so it's just a question of practicality, as far as I'm concerned. And so it's just a question of practicality, as far as I'm concerned. The ad hoc perhaps offers hope, perhaps not. Uh, Ironwood is not the solution to the problem. So I see those as two separate things.
Yeah, supportive of the ad hoc. I think that's a good idea. And I think, uh, also maybe making it about flood in general instead of just, uh, funding.
Well, these people have, these people have been waiting for decades and it's kinda like, College Park East, we could have an ad hoc for, for District One, Two, or we can just have one ad hoc for all the city because the money to solve this problem, sorry.
Uh, oral communications isn't open right now.
I'm sure you wanna.
I'm sorry, oral communications are over. This is council deliberation at the moment. Thank you.
So are you, you're, so you're saying, you know, sell the house, but form a committee?
Two separate, two separate issues. We can vote, have a motion to develop an ad hoc committee to study the flooding issue for all of Seal Beach and come up with ideas to get the funding. I mean, any, any one of us in this room would solve this problem immediately if we had the money, but we don't have the money.
But this is a city's job to do it. It's not our job.
Um, please, please.
It's, it's a question of practicality. Let's, let's bring a committee together. Let's get some ideas. Let's do that stuff. Separate and apart, we can still make a motion to move and sell Ironwood because Ironwood is not the solution to your problem. Ironwood is not the solution to the flooding problem in College Park East. Sorry? Oh, I'm sorry. That's fine too. Separate question. I don't have a problem with that either.
I, I, what I, what I said last year when, when the house was up for sale was I, I want, I thought before we sold the property that we should have another solution in place, a workable solution in place. The city, the city has presented a small plan, but that plan hasn't been made public. It hasn't been vetted out. Uh, the, the committee could look at that, but what happens if they find faults there and then that doesn't work either?
The question isn't the plan. We can develop a plan. We don't have funding to buy anything. An ad hoc committee can develop a plan that solves this problem, but unless we come up with a, a funding source that can solve this problem, it's not gonna get solved.
But we could have a committee while we hold on to the house as well.
Separate question.
Separate question. I, I, there, there seems to be some, uh, difference of opinion as to, uh, what, you know, what it would be necessary to get the house in rental condition. Um, you know, we have experts and I, and I appreciate that. Um, actually, uh, there's been a, what, would you like to offer a suggestion?
Um, so if we have $200,000 in the leased property account, there's $150,000 to fix the house, right? So my thinking is let's fix up the house. If that money can be utilized, I mean, I don't know what, that money's earmarked, I think, for the house or for College Park East. Um, and then maybe we create an ad hoc committee. Uh, rent the house out, create the ad hoc committee, just like we did with parking. Um, let's flush it out and see what they can come up with. And maybe at the end of the day, we can't come up with a shovel-ready project, you know, but at least we tried.
Any com, any comments? Any other comments? No. Okay, um.
Make a motion for an ad hoc, maybe I could.
Make a motion for an ad hoc.
Just the ad hoc question? Can I do that?
The motion for the ad hoc committee should be for the city council-
Has to be agendized.
To place the formation of an ad hoc committee on the next agenda.
Okay. Can, do we need a motion for that or just consent?
That would be helpful.
Yeah, I'll make that motion.
If you have any direction on the type of ad hoc committee, do you want residents?
With the two resident, with the two-
That would just help the staff prepare the, the resolution so it reflects your direction.
A second. Go ahead.
Oh, I'd make a motion to, uh, create the ad hoc.
We need to-
I don't think that's the solution. The city needs to do that.
It's, it's not the solution. I just said it wasn't the solution.
I know. It's a, it's just, it's a city community, committee. It would have, uh, city staff on it. It's just, it-
City staff and a couple of members from, uh-
No, it's-
I just wanna make clear that all, the only motion I'm hearing right now is just to place an item on a future agenda.
On the agenda to talk about-
Yeah, just a motion, put the item on the next agenda for creating an ad hoc committee.
Okay, uh, city, um, city clerk, could you take the vote?
So who made the motion? Was it you, Councilmember Moore? And who seconded it?
Yeah. I did.
Okay, Councilmember Steele. Councilmember Moore, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Steele, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Calmick, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Landau, how do you vote?
Yes.
And Mayor Sistarsik, how do you vote?
Yes.
Five votes yes to create an ad hoc committee.
That just puts that on the next agenda to, for a committee to talk about, uh, raising money.
Mayor, if I could, just to make, ensure that staff has adequate time to prepare the staff report and come to you with some potential alternatives for the formation of an ad hoc. If we could just keep it within the next two meetings?
Yeah, that's fine. That's fine. Thank you.
I'd like to make a, I'd like to make a motion to keep the house.
Okay, and I'll, I'll second that. Okay.
Is there a second?
Yes, I second it.
Oh, I'm sorry. Mayor Protem Landau, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mayor Sistarsik, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Calmick, how do you vote?
No.
Councilmember Moore, how do you vote?
No.
Councilmember Steele, how do you vote?
No.
Motion fails. Three votes no.
So at this point, it's just been a motion, the motion to keep the house has failed, but there hasn't been a motion to sell the house.
I'll make a motion to sell the house.
And would that be in accordance with the revised resolution 7490 that's been provided to you?
Thank you for that. Appreciate the support.
Is there a second?
I'll say it.
Can I, can I add to that motion that the funds stay in College Park East?
Councilman? If, if Councilmember Steele is willing to accept a friendly amendment?
Sure. We can accept that as a, uh, cop, uh, to the same motion.
So in addition, we'll add a, a new section six to resolution 7490 stating that all funds generated by the sale of the property shall be reserved in a fund to be used for storm drain improvements in College Park East. Does that work for you?
I'm, I'm okay with that motion.
Can I make a comment on that?
If I may, oh. It would be an assigned fund balance. We would set it aside in the general fund and as a, as assigned. It wouldn't be its own fund.
Okay. The, the funds will be set aside in the general fund for storm drain improvements at College Park East.
Yes, so that's gonna change the way I think because I don't, if we, whenever we set aside money in the city, it sits there for, forever and we don't, you know. So I would rather rent the house than
So, uh, Councilmember Steele accepted the friendly motion, uh, amendment to the motion uh, to include that new section six. Uh, is that still your? Are you still wanting to do that?
We can separate those two things, can't we, through two different motions?
If you'd like, yes.
Okay. Uh, let's suspend my original motion for a second and then we'll talk about where the funds go first and make a motion on what happens to the funds and we can take a vote on that. And, and then we can determine whether or not we would sell the house.
So that would be a motion to approve the revised version of resolution 7490 provided by staff without the addition of a new section dealing with how the funds would be spent.
Yeah, sure.
Well, wait a minute. Which one comes, he said that comes first.
He said that, that comes first. That's the only motion that's been made at this point.
Right. And can I suspend my motion until we determine what happens to the funds or may I not?
If you'd like to put the motion on the table and if it's seconded, you can debate it and continue discussing without having to vote on it.
I, let's suspend the motion to sell the property uh, until we can determine disposition of the funds through a separate motion.
Okay, so right now there hasn't been a second on Councilmember Steele's motion. You can continue debating that issue if you'd like.
There was a second. It was, um, Councilmember Calmick.
There was a second? Okay, excuse me. So that motion's on the table. You can debate it.
And we're debating withdrawing the previous motion, correct?
Uh, you already had done that as the motion maker.
Okay, so the previous motion is withdrawn. So Tom, you wanna talk about-
So this is setting money aside for College Park East?
Disposition of the funds from the sale of the property.
Okay. Yeah, I think that's pretty clear, so.
No. What, what would your motion be?
Uh, you already made a motion, right?
So that's suspended.
Let me, let me offer a solution. Uh, somebody can make a, an amended, an amended motion to add a new section six to the resolution that says that the funds generated by the sale will be set aside in the general fund for use on storm drain improvements in College Park East. If that motion is made and seconded, you can vote on that and then you're just deciding whether to add that provision to the resolution.
Okay. I'll make, I'll make that motion.
Okay.
Is there a second?
I'd like to make a substitute motion that we don't sell the house.
That's, so. So there's a, a motion's been made. The question right now is just whether it's gonna be seconded.
Which motion would, would be seconded?
That the funds stay-
The first one, that the funds stay in College Park East.
In an account for College Park East, if the house.
And so my original motion is still on the table, to sell the property-
Yes.
And use, hold the money for use in College Park East flood purposes. No?
You, you had withdrawn that motion.
Okay, all right.
And so the question right now was whether to offer an amended motion to add that section because you wanted to set, to take those issues separately.
Uh huh.
So Mayor Sistarsik has made that motion to add a new section to the resolution which, which will require that the funds be used in College Park East. We're waiting for a second on that and if there's a second, you could continue to debate it or vote on whether to add that section to the resolution.
I would second on that motion.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, so are we voting on both of these now?
No.
We got to do them second.
Right now, we're just voting on the amended motion to add the section to the resolution that will reserve the funds in College Park.
Wanted to make sure.
Thank you.
Mayor Sistarsik, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Steele, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Landau, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore, how do you vote?
No.
Councilmember Calmick, how do you vote?
Yes.
Motion carries four to one.
Okay. So the amended motion has been dispensed with. That section's been out of the resolution. Now, the main motion is still pending, which is to adopt the resolution.
Right. Adopting the resolution. I move that we adopt the resolution with the to sell the property. Right.
We already have a motion and a second for that. Okay, so I'll call for the vote right now.
Can I make a substitute motion at this point?
You can make a substitute motion.
I'd like to make a substitute motion that we don't sell the house.
That, that matter's been dispensed with. I, I would, that matter's been dispensed with.
Oh, okay.
So we have a motion and a second.
So we have a motion to sell the house and it's been seconded.
Correct.
Correct.
I'm gonna call for the vote now. Councilmember Steele, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Calmick, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore, how do you vote?
No.
Mayor Protem Landau, how do you vote?
No.
Council, I'm sorry, Mayor Sistarsik, how do you vote?
No.
That motion fails.
So at this point, there has been no action on the sale of the property.
That's right.
It doesn't appear, the council's ready to move on. The, the result is that it's not gonna be sold tonight.
Okay.
But the council, but the staff will still bring back an item, an agenda item to form an ad hoc committee.
Yes.
Okay, all right. Moving on to Agenda Item H, approving and authorizing Amendment Number One to the Professional Services Agreement with Raftellus Financial Consultants for Water and Wastewater Financial Planning Services. City Manager, do we have a?
Yes, Mayor. I'll call upon Iris Lee, our Public Works Director, just to briefly summarize this item and she's available for questions.
Thank you, City Manager Ingram, and good evening, Honorable Mayor, Members of the City Council. The item before you tonight is the recommendation to approve Raftellus Financial Consultant Professional Services Agreement Amendment. Raftellus was originally retained in June 2023 to provide water and wastewater financial planning services in the amount of $82,415 with a $5,000 contingency. As the city has elected to further review the proposed rates and conduct further public outreach beyond what was originally scoped, Raftellus has submitted a proposal for additional work in an amount of $48,352, which is presented before you as Amendment One. This concludes my brief presentation and I'm available for questions.
Uh, so is the scope of work staying the same?
The scope of the Amendment Number One is going to be providing, um, additional analysis for the study session, public outreach meeting, and should the council so desire that we were gonna be, be moving forward with, uh, renegotiating again.
Okay, so is this new, new scope of work gonna have alternatives?
That would be what the study session was intended for, yes.
Okay, and will they also come up with a, um, a new way of billing so it's more equitable and it's shared throughout Seal Beach?
Define equitable.
So that every resident in Seal Beach is included in, in this billing process, including Leisure World?
Aren't they already?
I'm sorry?
Aren't they already included?
Not equitably, no.
Define equitable.
Well, they need to, to pay a different share versus, so the residents that they have the capital.
Mayor Protem, can you speak into the mic, please?
Sorry?
Um, they don't have the capital cost.
Who doesn't have the capital cost?
Specifically residents in Leisure World.
Leisure World does not pay their fair share. Is that what you're saying?
Correct.
Wow, okay.
The, Leisure World residents aren't the only, they're not the only ones that, that have residence on fixed income. The Hill, Old Town, there, there's a lot of residents in Seal Beach that are on fixed incomes.
So what you're saying, do you have-
All I'm saying is explore, uh, another way to, to bill, to make it more equitable throughout Seal Beach for all the residents.
I, I just wanna add, I think that the part of the purpose of this contract is to make sure Raftellus is available for the public outreach meetings and, and that special meeting to hear and receive direction from the council on how to revise, if at all, the rate study, which could include something like that.
Okay. So we're just extending their contract? Is that, is that correct?
And then we can define, uh-
This is not committing you to do, approve anything with respect to the rates. It's just making sure that the support from the rate consultant is available.
Okay.
If I may, the clarification, um, to their scope of services um, is to explain how the rate structure, the basis behind how, um, the fixed charges and the variable charges are, um, was set back when the 2019, 2021 study. The scope of services does not include a re-evaluation of cost of services, which includes the rate structure. So that is not part of Amendment One. Um, if there is going to be a scope change on that, then we will need to come back with that. Um, if, maybe perhaps after the study session that, if the council so desires to move far in a different direction, then we will have to renegotiate that.
Thank you.
I have a question, if I may. Uh, the need for this contract right here, is it because we have a special meeting coming up of, uh, regarding the capital projects that we're going to examine?
So the original scope of services did not include the further outreach meetings, uh, the further study sessions that we are contemplating and are renegotiating.
So because we're having a special meeting and we're going to examine each one of the capital projects in, in, in the proposed program for the next five years, we are, have to spend, how much is this contract?
$48,000.
$48,000 more.
That is correct.
Thank you.
Okay, um- Okay, um, is, is, is that, Lisa, is that it? Would you like to make a motion or?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to approve the contract.
I'll, I'll.
Second.
Okay, and vote by, on your iPads, please. Okay, that's approved five zero. We'll move on to Item J, ratifying the declaration of emergency approval of emergency First Street parking lot lot repair dispensing with public bidding requirements, approval of emergency First Street parking lot geotechnical evaluation, approval of notice of completion and authorization to approve payments for the emergency First Street parking lot repair and geotechnical evaluation. Do we have a staff report?
Yes, again, this item will be presented by our Public Works Director, Iris Lee.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, City Manager Ingram. And good evening again, Honorable Mayor and Members of the City Council. The item before you tonight is to ratify the expenditures related to the First Street parking lot repair from the discovered sinkhole from our winter storms. This item was identified as an emergency and we did call out Hardy and Harper, which is the city's on-call contractor to repair the hole. This damage and the repair was in the magnitude of $49,535. As a next step, the city called upon GMU engineers and geologists to conduct a ground penetrating radar, GPR, test to analyze the potential for other subsurface voids. Analysis was conducted the morning of February 28th, coinciding with low tide. In summary, no apparent substantial voids were identified in the upper 10 feet. The analysis was in the magnitude of $15,600. Given the emergency nature of this work, staff is requesting a budget amendment in an amount of $66,000 to cover the repair and geotechnical analysis costs. This concludes my presentation. I'm available for questions.
Okay, I'm, so I'm good with the, the contract. I just have a couple of questions. I mean, do the engineers feel that 10 feet is sufficient? Because that sinkhole was rather deep and the dirt went somewhere. So it seems to me like 10 feet wasn't enough.
So 10 feet is what we can actually feasible get to, given the groundwater table conditions that we have over there. Usually, water conditions do distort any radar or exploration methodologies. So that's why we selected to explore and do the GPR during low tide conditions to get the maximum results back with up to 10 feet.
Okay, and the, did we reach out to the Army Corps of Engineers at all?
No, we did not.
Okay, and is there a, a geotechnical report then?
Yes.
Okay, so I don't know how this would work, but if it's possible that, that we have our EQ, EQCB board review that report. We have a lot of brilliant people in town and I think the, the committee is, is pretty knowledgeable. So are we able to get feedback from them on this report?
This is definitely an item that we could present if it's a recommendation by council to bring it before them.
Is that something that we vote on?
I think the council can provide direction on that. If it's ever, there's no objection, you don't need to vote on it.
Consensus. I objected that.
Okay, is there consensus on the, the rest? Or we have objections over here?
The only comment that I have is at what point do we not trust our staff to do their due diligence in researching and making this repair? And now we're going to open it up to another working group that's going to find things to challenge when there may be no basis from the geotechnical, from an engineering or an experience standpoint? That's my concern.
Well, we, it, it's not staff that, that did this report. We outsourced a geotechnical firm to give us this report. We have a highly, highly qualified EQCB board that, I mean, what?
When you say highly qualified, what do you mean?
They're, most of them are engineers with this background.
Mechanical engineers, geotechnical?
Environmental, civil.
I mean.
I mean, what, there's no cost to it. So what does it, what would it hurt?
It just seems as though it, it's kind of making the assumption that, that whatever, whatever our staff is doing is by definition not good enough and we need to go back and model and remodel and challenge what it is they're doing.
No, I don't, I don't agree with that. I think it's just having an extra set of five eyes look at this report. I was there, I was there during the flood. So I didn't see you there, but it was significant. And so my concern is.
Wait, how are you qualified to say it was significant? I went down and looked at it and it was, it was a hole.
Okay.
It was no more or less significant than anything I've seen on the news that swallows cars. I mean, it was, it was, it could have been created by the rain that elevated the water table. It could have been created by the fact that we did try and pump out the parking lot. But I'm certainly in no position to make any judgment other than relying on the analysis by our staff, which is led by an engineer.
Well, I don't think it was our staff that pumped out the parking lot that was the problem. It could be an aquifer. All I'm saying is it doesn't, it's not going to cost anything, so.
I would, but to what end are we wanting to do this to?
If I may, for one moment, the motion before us is to approve the emergency expenditure that's already happened and the fix that's already happened. And if, if Mayor Pro Tim Landau would like to have a separate study on this, she can make a motion at the next council to have the report opened up and have the environmental board look at it and do whatever they want with it. But I see these as two different things. And you can't, can't bunch them together in one single motion. We've spent this money on an emergency basis and the, the, the city council needs now, after the fact, to approve it. Otherwise, we would have had a hole in the ground for the last however many months it's been. So let's focus on the, the motion here, which is to approve the expenditure. And if you would like to, Mayor Pro Tim Landau would make a motion to organize or share it with the public and with the ECC board. You're welcome to do that.